Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Orange Township, held in the Council Chamber's City Hall, 29 North Gay Street, New Jersey, on Monday, June 24, 2019, at 7:10 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing a roll call. Councilwoman Easton here. Councilman Jackson is absent. Councilman Johnson Jr.
Here.
Councilwoman Summers-Johnson is absent. Councilwoman Williams present. Councilwoman Wooten is absent. Council President Coley.
Present.
Also present, Ms. Smith, Deputy City Clerk, Mr. Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Ms. O'Handlin, the Assistant Budget Consultant, Mr. Towns, the Legislative Research Officer, and Ms. Lefebvre, Record Support Technician in the Clerk's office. The requirements of NJSA 10:4-9 at set, the Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Orange Record Transcript and published in the Star Ledger on Friday, June 21, 2019, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the office of the City Clerk. The matters for discussion is a work session for the calendar year 2019 budget.
Okay.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams.
Just as a point of clarity, on the Council's website, there was an original post that said that there was a personnel hearing. Was that a mistake? Did you know anything about that?
There was personnel what?
Hearing. A personnel matter that we were going to have executive session.
Maybe that was a typo. It had to be.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Yeah. We're going to start... I apologize for being late, but I have other obligations during the day sometimes. We can start Tab 2, which is Page 1, and work our way through. Is that okay?
Yes, sir. Actually, Tab 3, maybe?
Page 2.
Page 1. Tab 2, Page 1. Any questions on Page 1?
Tab 2 or 3, because this is just a budget at a glance. That's what you're talking about?
Say again.
You're talking about where it says "Budget at a glance," or we're going to start with the...
No, the actual Tab 2, Page 1. Budget at a glance?
So, we're just going to go...
It has... It's the BA, SW?
Right. This is just a summary, so we're going to go to Tab 3, right?
Say again.
We're just going to go to the departments. This is just a summary, correct?
No, this is actual... This is actual, in the book.
In Tab 2.
Tab 2. Tab number 2, Page 1.
This is Administration Budget in Tab 2? Huh?
Yes. That's what I have.
Okay. Okay, so you're really here. You're really here. Okay.
You got it, Councilwoman Williams?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions on Page 1, Council members?
Mr. Hartwick, are you adding anybody to this department? Is it here that you're adding somebody?
No, not Mr. Hartwick.
Okay.
And Council President?
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
Before we go any further, can the BA address the salary and wages for, kind of like the whole city, if in fact there were some increases based to contract, if they wasn't due for promotions or whatever? Because I think we're going to be pretty redundant on... Because we can't change anybody's salary.
We can't.
So, just speak to the fact of whether or not we saw salary increases based on A, B, or C.
All of the numbers that you see in the salary lines reflect an anticipated increase pursuant to either the applicable union agreement or the ordinance governing salaries for non-union employees?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Council members, on Page 1?
Now, but I guess I'm a little confused. We went through the whole budget page by page.
We did.
So why don't we just go through where the concerns are and pick up there?
And that's a good...
Why are we being redundant of what we already done?
You know what, Councilwoman Easton, that is a very, very good point. And, Council members, do we have any areas or items that we need to discuss right now?
Well, I will go, Council President, through you to Mr. Hartwick. Mr. Hartwick, are you bringing in salary in your department?
Am I what?
Bringing in the salary in your department?
No. That person is going to actually, for the time being, be assigned to older adults.
To older adults? Okay. And what will the title be in older adults?
Rec aid.
There'll be a rec aid. At what salary?
I believe the salary for the rec aid is 43.
So it'll be a rec aid at 43?
Correct.
So we want to change to that section and...
So that's going to be at the community service?
Yes.
Look at where he's putting him?
Where? Are we exactly in the mind? I didn't follow you completely.
So that's in Tab 7?
So my question, was he bringing in somebody into his office?
And he said older adults.
And just so we're clear, I'm going to be moving that person around as part of his assignment. So when we're back here at this earlier than this next year, he may show up in a different place. I just want you all to be aware that the assignment may not be permanent.
And so are we bringing more money into the Department of Community Affairs, the 43,000?
I will be looking to move money from a different location, yes.
And it's 43 annual, so do we only need to add 20?
Technically, really, I only need to prorate it. I don't like to do that because I like to structurally build it in.
So you're saying you don't want to prorate it, you want to put the whole 43 in?
Right, because it affects our cap calculations.
Council President, does someone call out the page number?
Yeah, what page? This is Page 99?
So this would go into... Sorry.
The bottom left? That's how we go, the bottom left number?
Would go on Page 110?
Okay.
Well, I guess I consolidated all of these, didn't I?
No.
What? Yeah, we'd go on Page 99.
Go to Page 99, right?
So is that increasing the salary and wages?
It'll increase the salary and wages here by 43.
On 99?
Yes.
So if we're just doing a summary, are there other... Since we started, are there any other new employees coming in?
No.
So this is the only one?
The only one that I'm aware of. Sometimes I'm the last to find out.
Council members, any other questions, comments, concerns? Tabs number 7? Are there any other concerns?
I think there was a change in the Clerk's office, right? Tab 3?
Tab 3.
You added, what, lawyer's fees?
Oh, the additional 20,000?
On 31, you added $40,000 to professional services to bring it to 130. And... On 36, under City Council, professional services, we added $20,000.
Well... So that sort of evened out, didn't it? Because on Page 35, we reduced 15,000 to 3,000.
Right.
And on 37, we did reduce 50,000 to 35,000.
Mm-hmm.
So that sort of evens out the additional money that you added, doesn't it?
It picks up 15 and 12, so it gives me 27. But when we get to the end, we'll go back and figure out.
Has Megan already made these changes?
No. So my plan is that since there were quite a few new sheets that were handed out during the hearings, those are the sheets that I'm going to use. Remember, like, all of these were redistributed?
Right, right.
So these reflect all the changes, and I'll incorporate that into the amendment.
Okay. So you're what, 3,000 short of making up that additional money?
Well, I'm actually... 33,000 short. Because you got an additional 20 on Page 36, under 519, professional services, and an additional 40 on Page 31, professional services, taking that to 130. So... So I'm short 33, but we'll figure that out, like I said.
All right. Thank you. Council members, any other questions? Tab 3? Any other questions, concerns?
Were there changes in water operations? Can we make some changes over there?
Can we do that last? Only reason I ask that is because it doesn't affect the rest of the budget, or the levy, or the appropriation. So it's easier to handle separately.
Council members, any other questions, concerns, issues? Tab 3 or any other tab?
Bear with me, sir.
Yep.
Which one did you say you wanted to do last, Chris?
Water.
Water and sewer?
I'm sorry, what?
Which one did you say you wanted to do last?
Water.
Water and sewer?
Yeah.
The Council President on...
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
On Tab 10.
Tab number 10, okay.
That's Public Works.
Mm-hmm.
The first page is not numbered. That's a summation. Are those valid numbers on that summation page?
Tab number 10? I see. I'm looking at Page 145. That's what I'm looking at.
Me, too.
The bottom left?
Okay. I had a sheet in my book that I was ahead of that. It seemed like it was a summary page that was on top of 145.
Is this what you're looking at?
Oh, I know it.
Yeah.
He has...
This is got the other thing, right?
This was in Hallmark.
Yeah, okay. So this is the one that my office... It just shows you the to and from. So those numbers are accurate, but they're reflected in the handout that we have. And that just shows you where we're taking the money from and where we're putting it within the same budget.
Within the same department.
Not necessarily the same department, but the same budget. Because if that's the sheet, I think I took money from police and fire
Right.
to make up for items of omission in public works.
So this page is representing that the from is all coming out of Department of Public Works?
Okay.
And going someplace else?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it right, because I didn't know the two was. All right, that answers my question on that, Council President.
Okay. Council members, any other questions, concerns, any of the tabs?
And... Finances. Oh, Council President, through you to the... You know the professional services that we're using for paychecks, those cards?
Yes.
Is it possible that we can look at using a bank so we can get rid of all those fees they're charging? I mean, why was it that... Do we need to increase anything in the budget to do that?
Do you know what fees you're talking about?
Well, when they use... Each time they use their card, there's a fee, and then there's a supplementary fee. Nobody's complained about that to you?
You talk about going to the ATM?
Yeah. When they... Their service, whoever service we're using, they're starting to charge all these fees on top of...
The pay card?
Yeah.
Okay. Unless something's changed, the summary of those fees was discussed at length before we approved the contract. So if somebody's actually getting hit with a lot of fees, I need to know that, because that would be different than what we were told in the beginning.
Yeah, because... Right. I'll get some more information, because we really need to look at that. Because I know companies sell contracts, we sign them, and then once you get into them, things start to escalate.
Right.
So I was just curious as to why we didn't use a bank anyway in the first place?
Well, the reason for that is we only use the pay card when the employee doesn't have a bank account.
Okay.
So we can't do direct deposit, and they have difficulty cashing checks. If they go to a check-cashing place, they get charged 10% or more to cash their check. So we came up with the pay card alternative, and the pay card gets loaded by the payroll company with their payroll, and they can use it anywhere. But the fees are sometimes charged by the place where they use the card, not necessarily by the card company themselves.
So if they want to get rid of their fees, all they have to do is open up a...
A bank account.
A bank account, okay. And then they will have, like, an ATM card?
Correct.
Okay. Right, all right.
And Council President?
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
On Tab 11, and I apologize if I'm redundant, because the night that I missed, we talked about the court. I wasn't here. Page 167.
Okay.
And then Page 168 is missing, which I guess is salary and wages. It's not... I mean, I guess is operating expense. There is no 168.
Yes. It's 167, 168 is blank, and then goes to 169.
So looking at previous history, in 2018, they had... They put in a budget for less salary and wages, and this year it's bumped up again. I know they get their... The courts approved their budget and so forth, but...
So one of these positions is a POAA-funded position? Meaning that 70% of the salary comes out of the Parking Offense Agnewcation Act fund? And... The only other thing that was added from '18, if I'm remembering correctly, is a court aid position. And that's to keep up with the increase in ticket volume of roughly 28%. And in anticipation of the fact that we're going to e-ticketing, which will increase the volume of tickets dramatically. Should also decrease the amount of time it takes to process them. Won't cut down on the judge's time, but it should cut down on the paperwork.
Okay, so we have all full complement of judges, and nothing lacking there?
No.
And of course, what, the Superior Court in Essex?
I have one salary anomaly here, but I've accounted for correcting that in the salary adjustment fund.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, any other questions on Tab number 11?
Let's see.
Any questions on any other tabs? Questions, concerns?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
Tab 14.
Tab 14.
Orange Public Library.
Mm-hmm.
Or are we... Through you to the BA, are we all settled in on everybody agreeing on what they're proposing for and what we can afford to give them? The numbers that are reflected here are close to 900-something thousand. That's going to incorporate everything that they need to accomplish what they need this year? We're not setting aside any special funds for them or anything?
Well, we need to come back for that question.
Okay. Okay.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Wooten?
Through you to the Business Administrator. It's regarding the library as well. I don't think I saw anything for an accountant, other than the accountant that's doing the audit. So is there room for an accountant?
There was an account clerk proposed in their budget presentation who is basically a bookkeeper, and I believe they budgeted either 20 or 25 for that. And that's included in the 996.
Is that part-time or...
It was part-time.
Part-time?
I think it comes out to, like, three days a week.
Okay. Is that going to be enough?
Well, it isn't going to be the $65 an hour that they were paying the other person.
Right.
But I don't think that that's what they need. From their presentation, they said that if they had a basic bookkeeper with the board that they have now and the staff they have now, that that bookkeeper could address their bookkeeping needs, which would have their books in order for their audit. So I honestly don't know if that will work or not. I think we'll know that this time last, next year.
So would that bookkeeper set up the books, the initial books, or would the accountant... Or would you need an accountant to set up the initial books?
Well, what we provided them is their listing and structure of accounts, something that they haven't used before.
Okay.
Council President?
Councilman Johnson.
Councilwoman Easton, you need to ask questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilwoman Easton.
I guess my voice wasn't deep enough. Council President?
Heard.
So in all that same vein, so who does... Would the accountant do the checks and balances? Like, when they're contracted for work, who manages that piece to make sure the work is done before the bill is paid?
So if you have a library director, the library director gets their marching orders from the board, and if the library enters into a contract with a vendor, part of the library director's responsibility is managing that contract. If you're talking about a major construction project, you definitely don't want to go that way. They're going to want to hire somebody to manage that construction contract and build that cost in. Because if you're going to do a major renovation of the library, it's not reasonable to expect a library director to know how to manage that contract. If you're talking about, you know, a contract to provide a series of lectures, right, or services to the community through the library, that contract, it is reasonable to expect that the library director could manage. And the final check and balance on the management of all those contracts is the Board of Trustees of the library.
So before any bills are paid, the Board of Trustees has to approve them?
They have to follow the same rules that this body and the city follow. So the same procurement rules that apply to the city apply to the library. They have to go out. If it's the acquisition of goods, they're guided by the local public contracts law. If it's the acquisition of services, they're guided by the local public contracts law. So they either have to prepare bid specifications, or they have to do RFQs or RFPs. They can do direct contracts on a non-fair and open basis, below $7,000, without doing any advertisement or soliciting any quotes. But other than that, they have to follow the same rules and regulations that we do, which is why they need a lawyer.
They have a general counsel.
What?
They have a general counsel.
For the record, Councilwoman Wooten arrived at 7:20.
Council... Councilman Johnson, you going?
Yeah, I'm waiting for you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman.
While we're on the library, just want to make... Get in my mind how we picture structuring their overall budget. Are we to include the library portion of healthcare benefits as a taxpayer portion of their budget, or does this perceived to be something else other than that? Should we be saying to them, yes, and we give you $185,000 for healthcare benefits in addition to...
Well, the 996 that's reflected on Page 191 does not include that 185.
Correct.
So it's six and one half dozen of the other, how you treat it. It's all inside a cap.
It's all inside a cap, but there's three things happening for the library, state mandate, or... And then what we give them above and beyond, in addition to the healthcare that makes up their overall... That makes up their overall 2019 budget. Just wanna make sure I was reading correct. Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Woodin?
To the Business Administrator, it's about the library again. So, whenever they gave their presentation, the, um, board president alluded to the fact that there was gonna be a salary increase for the...
For the library director?
Right, right. So, was she given a contract when she was hired? And like if so, did they propose a certain amount? And did they say they were gonna go up to that amount? Because if you give her that amount, and then you're requesting 900,000, so we're gonna pay you like 100 and some change? And then operate the library from that?
Well, when she was originally hired, they hired her as an executive director. Which is not a position for a library within the civil service.
Gotcha.
So, the newly constituted board decided to, um, effectively put her against the appropriate civil service title. And what they indicated, to my recollection, during their budget presentation was that they did a survey of library director salaries in surrounding incomparable communities, and they have a range. They have made no decision, according to their testimony, final decision, with regard to this particular library director's future. That was subject to a negotiation. They did put in the salary adjustment line, some money for that and some longevity, uh, money. So, um, I'm not sure that I can answer your question, because I don't know that they've actually made a decision.
Gotcha.
125 to 148, and she should be right about 125.
That's what they said during that test. But I think that's gonna be part of the negotiation.
Okay.
With the board.
Okay.
And I think right now she's at an hourly rate of 61.35?
Correct. Puts her, based upon her, uh, hours, her part-time hours, at roughly 80 a year.
Any other questions, comments on tab 14?
Um, what is something, we discussed all the increases that they, you have all those increases. Didn't they give some increases in their presentation? The library?
The library, yeah, we have them.
Okay. And you, I think, um, Director Hartwick, one of the things that you, um, that you were beating with, after their presentation and that money that we had discussed last year, um, for the audits, there was a couple of things.
So, we actually discussed at the last council meeting, the fact that I was going to pay the architect and for the two audits from 2012 and 13. We've cut those checks. And I have a meeting coming up with Samuel Klein to see, uh, how I can negotiate the balance of their audits. Because those are not accounted for in this budget.
The, the, the outstanding audits are not accounted for?
No. The only thing that's accounted for, I think, is 18 and 19. On the audit line.
And you just paid for...
I just paid for 12 and 13. They're going to do 14, 15, 16, and 17. And we did anticipate that the account clerk, who is the bookkeeper, would actually be able to reconstruct the bank records from those years, so that the audit can actually be done.
Is this a new position, the account clerk? Is this a new person?
It's the position they put in as opposed to having an accountant. It's the one we were talking about before. So, it's in there for $25,000.
Is it a new person?
Uh, to my knowledge, they don't have the person yet. It's just a funded position. And they're looking to fill it.
Thank you.
And I hope they do, quickly, soon.
Council members, any other questions on tab 14? Any other questions on any other tabs? Comments, concerns?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Woodin?
May I ask a general question about training? So, how is it determined what employees will be able to go to training or go to classes? And is there some sort of, um, like, who's been in longer gets to go? Or is it up to the director of the department?
So, the first consideration is whether or not there's a collective bargaining agreement that covers the issue.
Okay.
If there is, that's a contractual requirement that we're required to honor.
Okay.
For any of the non-represented employees, or employees whose training is not required under a collective bargaining agreement, then they have to follow the tuition reimbursement ordinance.
Okay.
And that require, that, that has a whole process where you have to justify to your department director the need. And one of the things that they take into account in that justification is whether or not those CEUs that you're obtaining are necessary to be maintained for your employment. And they should get top priority over anything that is not required for your employment.
Council members, any other questions, concerns, any other tabs? Yes, Councilman Johnson.
I have a general question for the, for the B since we're on the topic of, uh, of this budget. And do we have a relatively young workforce in the city of Orange? Or do we anticipate having some retirees like the fire and police department?
You just go, you said there's potentials?
You have, uh, in the fire department, I'll just go down each department. In the fire department, you're gonna lose 30 to 50% of your senior officers within the next two years. In the police department, you will lose 20 to 28% of your senior officers, uh, within the next two to three years. Many of those people are actually eligible to go today, but have indicated that they're not ready to go yet. Either they're waiting on another list, or some other consideration. In, uh, D P W, uh, which is your next largest department, you have a relatively young workforce. As we sit here today, on the outside staff, not the staff that work in this building, but that are actually out in the field, uh, you have five people who could potentially retire. One this year, and four in the next year and a half. On the inside staff, three people who actually run the D P W office could all retire tomorrow, if they wanted to. That would be catastrophic.
Right.
The director, uh, and the deputy director, uh, both have advanced years, but not eligible for retirement within the next few years. For the rest of City Hall, uh, you have approximately, and I haven't looked at the list in a while, but you have about 30 people. Between the civilians in the police department, the civilians in the fire department, and the civilians in this building, you have approximately 30 to 35 people who are either eligible now, or will be within the next 18 months. Several of those people not only are eligible, it actually costs them money to come to work. Because once you hit a certain level within the pension, um, because you have to pay a contribution.
Right.
But your payout doesn't go up anymore.
Right.
They're still here paying into the pension, but they're beyond that point in time.
So...
So, there's the distinct possibility that a large group of people could exit within the next 30 months.
So, that's a, that should be a con, uh, a conversation that you and the mayor have in going forward in the next three years or so, to try to, uh, right-size, right-size the workforce in the city of Orange. Because I know we like a couple hundred, three, four, 400 folks working for the city of Orange. But that would, that would, that would help, uh, us dealing with the salary and wages thing going forward. I know it's something we can't change now, but through attrition, I'm quite sure through management, we can start reversing some of this, some of this stuff.
As you can tell, I keep pretty close track of who's eligible and who isn't.
Yeah, you got it memorized. Thank you, Council President.
You're quite welcome.
Council members, any other questions on any other tabs, issues, concerns? No other questions, concerns? Madam Clerk?
Okay, um, I think Councilman, I'm sorry, uh, the B A Hartwick had something to speak about water and sewer.
Yes, water sewers.
So, um, I just need a couple minutes to speak to Megan about the water and sewer budget. If that would be alright with the council.
We'll take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Motion to recess?
Motion for a recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please forgive my tiredness, everybody. 7:52, and Councilman Jackson, uh, arrived at 7:50.
You have a celebration after that. Yeah, but, but they already said 7:30. But 7:40, everybody can make it on time. But I've been here since like 20 after 6.
The first one went to public works? And then you have someone coming?
Right.
So, that's a wash?
Except you can go with a $63,000 salary.
Right.
So, actually, you pick up $20,000 on the operating side of the salary.
Right. Town clerk? Also, yes?
As a laborer?
Okay.
Weren't that many changes?
What's the salary for the second person?
Page 31 and page 37.
Yeah, I mean, if those are, um, the only changes. And how are those done, are they? You've done the capital research, or you're not yet?
Right now, I'm just paying within our funds.
Right.
Don't forget you gotta look at the computers.
Need more time?
You ready, Captain?
We're ready.
We have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry. Reconvene?
Move, second.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Hartwick, you had a floor.
So, some of the changes in the water operating budget, um, as the council's aware from our discussions, this is a fairly fluid situation. So, one employee, um, under the title Laborer One has been moved over to the Public Works Department. The Water Services Manager stipend stays where it is, but that person's no longer the Water Services Manager. So, we took that money, um, and added another $53,000 to fund the transfer of the person from Public Works into the position to oversee the day-to-day in the Water Department. So, that salary is 63,000. It's a longtime city employee with over 30 years of experience, who had 23 years of working in the Water Department. And then, there's a new laborer slash water sample and meter reader, um, in the Water Department at 43,000. And we believe, there's also, we have to fund the professional services line to include the contract, um, that we've discussed with council and which was approved. And we believe that we can fund, uh, all of those with adjustments to the revenue line. Uh, because in the last month and a half, we've collected over $400,000 in delinquent accounts.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Eason?
Harvey, can we go back to that salary again?
Sure.
So, Laborer One has moved to Public Works, right?
Correct, and took their salary with them. Correct, and took their salary with them.
And he took the salary, so replacing that, you said Laborer's coming in at what, forty-three?
Correct.
So that, that will be forty-three for that line? That's even forty-three?
Mm-hmm.
So, and you've hired?
So, actually, the person I hired is at the forty-three level.
Okay, so that's Laborer One?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Right, and then I transferred over from Public Works, a senior Public Works employee, whose salary came with him at sixty-three thousand dollars.
So why do we still have that, if you fill in those positions, why is there still a ten thousand dollar stipend there? Do you still need that?
Well, I don't need the person, but I may need the money.
But I'm saying, so, so you, you need to keep the ten thousand dollars, but that position...
That's right, that, that, that position is no longer there.
All right, so did that person's salary get reduced by ten thousand?
You know, I think that's highly unlikely.
Thank you, pardon? I beg your pardon?
I said, I think that is highly unlikely.
Because?
Uh, because the person picked up supervision of the field inspectors, field and code inspectors, in the property maintenance department. So instead of having them report to the Director of Planning, they're now reporting to the Deputy Director of Public Works.
You lost me there. The ten thousand dollar salary that I'm talking about, stipend, is in the Department of Deputy Public Works. Okay, right?
No, this ten thousand dollars is actually in the water and sewer operating salary and wage.
No, no, but it goes to the person that's Deputy Director of Public Works.
Yeah, without talking about people, yes.
So what I'm saying is, if you staffed all of the water and sewer, and you no longer need that position there, because now you brought in two new people, right?
Right.
Why do you still need that ten thousand dollar stipend to stay with that person?
Um, it, it isn't staying with the person, it's just staying in the water and sewer salary and wage area.
So, so in order for it to stay there, it has to be a reduction somewhere else? Has to be a reduction somewhere else, that's the way it makes sense.
Well, look at it this way, okay? Because the Water Services Manager, let's just cross that out, okay? And cross out the name, all right? That leaves you with a ten thousand dollar, uh, suggested appropriation, and you can call it a salary adjustment line, you can call it all kinds of stuff. I didn't want to take it out, because quite frankly, um, I'm not exactly sure what's going to happen in the Water and Sewer Department. It is, as I said to you on multiple occasions, a work in progress, there's a lot going on. But if the council feels more comfortable taking it out, I have no problem with that, because the person whose name is next to it is no longer doing it, and I don't have it assigned as of yet.
And just to be clear, can you just go, you have a Laborer One and a County Clerk?
So, the Laborer One...
No, just, what's the name, just, just tell me the titles you have there.
Laborer One slash Water Sample Collector slash Meter Reader. And so you understand, the reason that title's there is because, over the next year, I have to actually go out and log the latitude and longitudinal location of every meter in the city. Then I have a, a title that I'm still working on with Civil Service. It, it's a management title for water, but I have to speak to Civil Service, because certain of the titles require licenses. And so I didn't want to make a mistake, which is why I'm still having that dialogue. So, that's basically the day-to-day supervisor. And then you have the Account Clerk. And this is here primarily to account for the fact that the Tax Office does do water servicing of citizen customers. And so, while it may not necessarily be this person, it's a means of actually subsidizing the city's operating budget by putting it in water.
And then I...
And a recognition that there is someone in the Tax Office who's working on customer service issues and collection issues for the Water Department.
And did you also want another County Clerk in there? Did I have a County Clerk, twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, I don't need that now.
You don't need that now?
No, I may come up with that at a later date, but I don't need it now.
And you still just wanted the ten thousand, but no, and what, what would the title be for the ten thousand?
It would be a supervisory stipend.
If you...
Yeah, I, you know, it's...
But you still lost me, because...
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to lose you.
I'm still trying to play with the numbers. Because, I, I guess, help me understand, and me, my, my whole way, I don't know.
But we're in water, so that would be appropriate.
I'm still trying to follow the ten thousand dollars, let's just follow that. So we removed the name, we moved that. So in order for that to stay there, with nobody, as a vacancy, that ten thousand dollar has to reduce from another salary. So are we reducing that other salary to keep that ten thousand dollars there?
No, that person's salary, I can tell you, is going to stay exactly where it is, right now. But that ten thousand dollars is going to be picked up in another location.
For that person's salary?
Correct.
Okay.
And whatever this function that was being funded, which was previously done by an Assistant City Attorney, and then was done by this person...
So what we're really doing, and just so I'm clear, is you add in another ten thousand dollars to the budget.
That's right.
That, that's all I needed to clarify.
Absolutely correct.
I want to make sure that it was clear, so this is an additional ten thousand dollars that we added to the budget. So if we needed to cut something to put that money, we could really take that ten thousand dollars and cover the thirty-three thousand that we're missing in what we added, right?
Yeah, and if you were going to do that, I'd tell you, leave the ten thousand here, and take the ten thousand out of the Department of Public Works salary and wage line. Because that helps you on cap, this doesn't.
But that's what I'm saying, so you're saying on the other, in, um, I think it was the Clerk's office, we're down thirty-three thousand. So if you really don't need this position, and we get rid of that Services Manager, we could take this ten thousand dollars, instead of filling it, and put it over there.
You, you could do it that way, but that wouldn't be the best way to do it.
But then you, then you're only short twenty-three thousand.
What I'm saying to you is, if you want to take the ten thousand out, right, to free it up, take it from the Department of Public Works, and move it to the council's budget. Because that way, this ten thousand dollars stays outside of cap.
But you're saying, go back to one forty? You're saying, go back to one forty-five and take ten, where would we take the ten thousand from?
I don't know, I have to look.
Okay.
Well, I'm not that concerned, but I, I'm fine with that. As long as, I'm not fine with increasing the budget another additional ten.
Right.
But, I mean, if we can figure out how to cover the shortages some other way, then I'm fine with that.
Okay. So we'll look at that.
Any other comments, Mr. BA, regarding the water and sewer?
Hmm, no.
Hey, Council President?
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
On that subject, I, I added all those line items together, and I came up with a hundred fifty-nine thousand. Five oh seven seventy-one, are we all on the same page?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The last sheet was a hundred fifty-four, and then we're back up to a hundred fifty-nine?
One fifty-nine, five oh seven, dot seventy-one.
Okay.
Council members, any other questions, concerns, issues? Regarding the budget?
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
I just want to go real quickly back to Public Works.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Because I guess my concern is there.
I'll get it in a second. What tab is that, Councilwoman, uh, Eason?
Page one forty-five.
Ten?
Yes.
Tab ten, okay. Tab ten, yes.
Under Code Enforcement. Which page is that?
Code Enforcement's actually in Planning, right?
It is?
Yeah. So it would be tab six, I think?
Yeah.
That's June. And inspections?
Yes. Inspections and licensing salary and wage, page eighty-nine.
Are you plan, so where is the additional Code Enforcement that we need?
That we have, that we just, that we just hired?
Did we hire somebody?
Yeah, we moved him from Public Works to Code Enforcement.
I think it's additional duties added to somebody from Park, Public Works.
No, Councilwoman's correct. There's a forty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollar and ninety cent position being added there.
Because we had four, four Code Enforcement offices years back. One for each ward.
Right.
And then we only have two.
No, we got more, we got more now, right?
No, right now, you have...
Only have one, really, cause isn't one of them sort of like a supervisor?
No, right now, you have three. Those three, um, one came over with his salary from Public Works.
We did?
Yeah.
Is that included in this, in this salary here?
I just moved it from one department to another.
So the two twenty-one went up?
Hang on one second. If you look over on page one forty-nine, tab ten.
Okay.
Entry number nine.
Okay.
Moved with his salary to Code Enforcement.
So that's forty-three thousand dollars additional to the two, uh, two hundred twenty-one, right?
Mm-hmm.
What is that, forty-three, what, eighty-five, ninety? Now why is, let me see. Why is the third person, one, two, three, from the bottom?
Are you on one forty-nine?
No, I'm back on eighty-nine.
Okay.
I, I got the one forty-nine, I'm trying to see if I saw that.
He's in there because...
So thirteen, look at thirteen.
Right.
Didn't we hire a new person for that?
Where are you at, Councilwoman?
Well, I don't know what you're looking at, what's thirteen?
One one forty-nine, number thirteen.
Forty-nine.
One forty, okay.
Is that person still doing that, or didn't we hire somebody else?
Hired somebody else.
Okay, is that person listed here?
Does not appear to be, I have to make that correction.
Okay, so he's going to replace thirteen?
Correct.
So all of thirteen's salary is going to go back to the Health Department?
Correct.
So you're going to take him off of eighty-nine also?
No, not.
So he goes to stay on eighty-nine?
Yep, because part of his time is spent working with Code Enforcement.
Okay, so you, you're sharing him?
Correct. Trying to get more out of less.
I think he works pretty hard.
He does. That's not a comment on him, it's that he, when he's out doing animal inspections and other things, he happens to see a lot of property maintenance code issues and building code issues. So we've changed the policy, and he now reports all of those to the appropriate people with pictures. And usually waits for them to get there.
So what is the new salary for thirteen? Is it, that you got a full-time?
It's part-time at that salary.
At the same salary?
Correct.
So the salary number won't change, it's that the bodies will change?
Correct.
And his, he will get his additional salary?
And he's being trained by the make, the full-time mechanic.
Okay. So that, that salary, the wage, just stays at the one point two?
Yep.
And yeah, and the two twenty-one, Councilman Johnson, you added that up?
No, I wasn't on that. I was on that, no, I'm on top of that addition.
I have it.
Oh, okay.
We have a budget consultant.
Oh, no, you were so officially doing the other one, I thought you were staying on...
I took a break on that.
What does that one go to?
Two sixty-four, two fifty.
Okay, so eighty-nine goes to two sixty-four, two fifteen?
Yeah, two sixty-four, two fifty. So that means now we have more Code Enforcement feet on the street, right?
That's the idea. We're also splitting their schedule. We're also splitting their schedule.
What does that mean?
We've had a discussion with the union about it. It means that I'm going to have coverage two days on a weekend.
Oh, okay.
Since that's when most of the violations are happening.
We still need to address, uh, but that's another conversation, what's happening in all those backyards?
Oh, we've already had that conversation with the new Code Enforcement people, which is why I took them all out to that street that you and I were on. And we've already served, uh, that particular residence with violations. And we have also re-hit the one on White Street and the one right down here. But there's probably two dozen of them that are operating on weekends.
Yeah, somebody covered those, and another one on Linden Place.
Right.
Lit, uh, not Linden, well, it's on Ridge Street.
Right, right around.
That the noise this week was unbearable, so we, we got to cite them all, so...
Uh, council members, any other questions regarding the budget, any tabs? Any pages?
Okay.
Madam Clerk? Oh, CBAC.
You have any questions?
You guys have any closing remarks before we, um...
She said no.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Um, just a sec. Motion. Wait, one second. So, are we on point for the, um, to adopt in August, or we don't know yet? We're waiting to see if we're going to be on the agenda?
I'm actually going to be on the phone with the Director's Chief of Staff. Hopefully tomorrow, I'll put a call in today, so we'll find out when we're going down.
Okay. So then, just for clarity, so our next meeting is on July twenty-second, then August seventh after that. Right?
We moved it to the twenty-second.
For July twenty-second, it, it won't, it's, it won't even be a thought for July twenty-second?
No, it may be.
It may be?
There'll be an amendment on July twenty-second.
Yeah.
There'll be an amendment on July twenty-second. And then possibly adoption on August seventh? Or possibly adoption on July twenty-second as well?
Because that's a Monday, you will miss the deadline. You won't be able to do an adoption on August seventh for an amendment that's introduced on the twenty-second because you'll miss the publication deadline.
Okay. So now we're into September?
Uh, or this, yeah, or a special meeting in August, which nobody wants to do. But in sixteen, we're October.
I, I have a question. Are, are there a list of things that led to delays that we can avoid next year? That we, I mean, do you know what we might have avoided? That we can avoid next year so that we can get the budget passed earlier in the year?
Yes.
So, that, that, that's the mission, right?
In more ways than one.
Okay. Thank you.
Timely bank reconciliation? An accurate salary chart?
Yes, yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Neeson, second by Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, I am. I already did.
Readjourned at eight twenty-two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes, ayes.